I'll call the Mendon Select Board meeting of October 24th, 2022 to order. It is five.
This conference will now be recorded.
It is 5:00 PM. We are on PEG TV and we are being recorded. So the first thing is add or delete any items to the agenda. The only thing I have is there was a request from our road crew regarding some of the tires that came up before the F-150 about donating two wheels for warmth. And do you have anything to add to the agenda?
I don't.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of a discussion on donation of tires. Do you second?
Sorry.
Okay.
Yes, I do.
All those in favor of the agenda, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Under announcements, the first one, the local hazard mitigation plan will be presented at the Planning Commission meeting on November 4th, 2022, and the public comment period will extend to November 28th, 2022. And the Select Board is accepting letters of interest to serve as a member of the Select Board until March 2023. We have Seth Bridge here this evening, will be on number five under public comment. And...
Larry, please interrupt.
Sure.
I just want to do a date correction. That says that the Planning Commission is meeting on 11th June. That should say November 7th. November 7th is the Select Board or the Planning Commission meeting.
All right, so as a correction, getting back to the local hazard mitigation plan, the Planning Commission meeting is on November 7th, 2022, not November 4th. And I have a communication from the Otter Creek Communications Union District, which Mendon is a member of. There is no cost to the town involved in this. It's an update, and I forwarded the budget to our town administrator and to Val Taylor. Just read this quickly. "The Otter Creek CUD serves 18 towns in the Rutland region, and we are working to provide a fiber optic internet connection of at least 100 megabits per second," and that's symmetrical, which means your download and upload speed are the same, "to each and every on-grid premise that is classified by the state as being underserved." Underserved means is below 25.3, which is 25 megabits per second download, and 3 megabits per second upload, and four to one, or unserved, which is less than four to one. "We issued a request for proposals earlier this year, and we have been working with the respondents to come to an agreement. We are following the model that Southern Vermont CUD has successfully used to win construction grant funding for their towns because our regions have very similar pre-existing internet infrastructure than other regions. We are working hard to reach an agreement with potential partners by the end of the year, at which point we will plan to apply for grant funding from the Vermont Community Broadband Board. After we are funded, we will be working with our partner on the engineering, procurement, and construction of the fiber optic network. The overreaching goals of OCCUD are universal service, providing access to internet service of 100, 100 to all under and unserved, capital efficiency, low cost to subscribers, and doing this all as quickly as practical." And they have a website. Anyone who wants to visit it at OCCUD.org. So the goal is that when this is done, that every premise, the premise is a, is a building, whether it's a commercial or residential, every premise in Mendon, along with the region, will have access to high-speed fiber optic internet, provided if they want to sign up All right, administrative matters. We have the signing of orders. Make a motion to approve orders for October 24th, 2022 of $1,296,641.20, and a payroll for October 17th, 2022 of $11,239.78.
Second.
Motion in the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The, that large amount, in case everyone wants to know, is the Barstow Unified Union We're sending them a check for $1,280,275. That's coming out of this check warrant. Sarah, Deputy Riggs has joined us from the Rutland County Sheriff's Department. Thank you for coming. And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented from October 11th, 2022.
I second that.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion approves. And does anyone here has a public comment? That'd be a good time for you to present your, we know your interests, so board's yours.
Yeah. I just, I realized that we've gone short with select board members until the spring 2023, and I just wanted to offer my interest in stepping in for that period of time. I don't have a whole lot of knowledge on that end, but I am here to learn and, you know, be involved and, you know, be another set of eyes and ears, body, to hear everybody's
And, you know, hopefully we'll be around to make that decision, maybe even at our next meeting, unless, we haven't heard anyone else yet that's stepping forward, but still we'll leave it open and then make a decision.
Yeah.
And this is a great, you know, great time to step in because you'll be able to go through the budget process, and it's, it's a learning curve.
Absolutely.
Yeah, step by step. So, yeah, we appreciate you coming forward and offering your service, and again, we'll put it on our agenda, and hopefully we'll fill this position, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
For stepping forward. We really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to business. Number six, in health insurance for 2023. Sarah, you going to take this one? Well, what have we got here?
Um, sure.
And we want to decide this at this meeting. Go ahead, Sarah.
Well, I'm sorry, what did you say, Larry?
It's a request that we need to decide this at this meeting. Yep.
Correct. If there are any questions off the timeline, let me know, but we prepared a recommendation for the Select Board, which outlines the rate increases for both Blue Cross Blue Shield and MVP. Blue Cross Blue Shield rates for 2023. Just as a reminder as well, health insurance is on a half calendar year decision-making of this calendar year. So this insurance rate will become effective as of January 2023. Blue Cross Blue Shield rate increased by 4.5% and MVP's reduced by just over 11%. MVP continues to be 2% less than Blue Cross Blue Shield, but now they're very similar. In the past, the town determines the funding level and allows employees to choose the carrier and the plan. Both employees are with, or all the employees are with MVP. They did have the lower rate, and they continue to have the lower rate. The formula includes the town paying 92.75% of the premium and the employee paying 7.25%. The town doesn't limit employees from contributing to an HSA with the funding levels from the town. They are able to choose the plan that best fits their needs. And the town offers a buyout of that 40% of the town's cost for the employee eligible All of that's over last year. What has changed is the makeup of our employees and what plans they're eligible for. So we, and included in these budget numbers are, is assuming that we will be hiring the third-world crew of employees during 2023. Health insurance for that individual is also included.
And that's budgeted?
The total in, uh, go ahead.
And that employee, we've set aside enough money, should be a family plan? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, all, if we cover all?
So you're looking this evening for an approval of this plan?
So last year's budget number was 104,337, and this year's 2023 number would be 107,402.
Correct, yep.
So the increase, we, the town didn't experience the 11% increase because the plans that employees were eligible for had changed. During the budget process, I'll be recommending that we budget for at least a 3% increase for six months out of the year for the January through June 12, 2024. We'll see an increase, most likely we'll see an increase, and so my budget request is for $109,013, and that includes a 3% increase for six months.
That figure again, 109?
109 and 13, or that's, $109,013. 109,013.
Okay. Do you have any questions on this one, or?
No, I mean, we're, well, yeah, I do. The gold versus the platinum, I mean, are we choosing, are we choosing that right now? Do we have that?
Did you hear the quote?
So the employees can choose the plan that they, that that suits their, their family makeup needs. What we funded in the past, what Mendon has funded in the past, is the 97% of the, of the platinum plan.
Okay. Just to cover all choices. To cover all choices.
Right.
All right, and then the employees have to submit this by December 1st, 2022.
Correct. So if you make a decision tonight, they would have the month of November to evaluate the plan.
Do a bet. All right. So I'll get started. I'll make a motion to approve the funding of the health insurance for 2023 as presented. You need a number for the motion? She's muted.
Sarah?
You're muted.
I, I'm muted.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. What I'd like you to approve, Larry, is the, the funding level on the first page, which is the 2023 funding level, and I will include that table in with the minutes. That outlines from single plan to the family plan as well as the buyout of that 40% of the total plan cost.
All right, so then the motion will be to approve the 2023 funding levels as presented for Mendon's health insurance.
Please do.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Elbow Road water bars, and we have an expert with us this evening that has actually seen these, and then I'll start with getting the opinion from Justin Lindholm.
Okay, it was, it's a little rough getting over the road because of the height of the water bars. They're kind of on the severe side. I haven't heard any complaints, but we have found vehicle parts up there on the road. One was a Subaru, a couple of Subaru parts. I don't think SUVs are, are going to make it without getting clobbered up there. What I would recommend is that maybe we go down there with a bulldozer on the way down, just flatten them a little bit, just with bulldozer blade, maybe, because a bulldozer being on tracks, it won't go up and down, it'll keep straight going across those things. That might be fast and easy way to give them a little bit of a flatter, more flatness. But that's basically my opinion. But we haven't had anybody scream and yell lately. They started screaming and yelling, but everybody has stopped doing that, but we still find more parts up there. Somebody left part of a bumper up there recently. So they are severe.
Yes.
The place is basically made for off-road type vehicles anyway.
But people are still going to try it if they can find it with GPS on the air.
The GPSes tell them that you can get from Pittsfield to Chittenden as a shortcut there, and that's why they keep going up. I mean, we see them every time I'm up at that camp, my relatives, we wish them good luck, wave on, wave to them on the way by. Most of them come right back. Some don't.
Some don't. One-way trip. Sarah, turning this over to you. Did we have a recommendation from our road commissioner on Elbow Road? What to do with it?
No, we, we don't necessarily have a recommendation. I just want to make sure that you are aware of the issue, just a recap, is that the state of Vermont, as they were upgrading their road through their forest, then went on to a section of the road that is the town of Mendon right-of-way and put water bars, significant water bars, on Mendon portion of the highway. And so the question for your road commissioner is should you make the state of Vermont mitigate the water bars that they installed so that it can be passable easier, or do you just wait? Time will break down those water bars as the rain falls, but it'll take a while to fill in. We don't have control over the right-of-way of the state of Vermont through the state forest, part of both the roads, those water bars that we made in that section of the road. We come to concern if we're, if Mendon is utilizing that road for a right-of-way for emergency purposes, but to date, we have not been granted that contingent easement from, across that land that would occur between the transfer ownership between the state of Vermont to the transfer public lands and then the Green Mountain National Forest. That we've been waiting for that transfer for, I think, four years now.
So the options are to leave as is until it fills in, and I have no timeline as to what, what that means. Years?
Well, complaints have stopped.
Years.
So that's one good thing. And I don't think, I don't know if the town has received any complaints directly or not, but even if we were to smooth out the water bars on the town road section that isn't on the state land, if they stay on the state land, whoever goes through is going to get clobbered when they hit to the, get to the state land anyway. So taking them out just on the town road section probably wouldn't be very helpful. There's still going to be plenty of them across that state piece that's a cut over on state land and off our town road.
So Sarah, if we requested Vermont State Department of Forest Parks and Recreation to alleviate these water bars, that they would do all of them, including ours in their own land, or, because as Justin said...
They would not be looking at their own land. So their explanation is that they're following the requirements of the, of the Vermont State Forest Management in installing the water bars on the state land. So they are not looking to mitigate the water bars on the state land, and nor do we have control over requesting that.
So to Justin's point, if this Select Board requested they mitigate them on our land on our right-of-way, we're just smoothing it out and we're setting them up for the next set of water bars, and they're just going to, yeah?
Yeah, you're still going to encounter water bars.
Yeah.
Of the same severity. There won't be as many, but it only takes one to rip out the bottom of your vehicle, and if the state does not take out their water bars, it may not be such an important thing to take out our water bars.
All right, so I think at this time, since they're not, they would be taking out their own, and we haven't received more complaints, that we'll just kind of, Brian Gates has joined the meeting.
How come we can't get online?
You can't get online?
No, we can't get, there's no agenda online for tonight, and you can't get on the meeting.
Yeah, I don't have the answer for that.
No, this agenda is posted at mendonrt.co.
It's not on there.
I'm on the meeting, so...
I just want to know if it's not on there.
So I don't think we'll take any, you know, you know, require, or action at this time to see if, you know, we get any more complaints. You know, I've seen some things for engineering where we're set with no, where we had a, right after Irene, a large culvert installed in Wheelerville, and the intake, which was lined with stone, was down like a foot below the culvert, which means the water can't get into the culvert, and so the engineer informed us that that fills in, and eventually the water, the level gets, and it did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which will happen with these too.
Yeah.
Actually.
Yeah, that's the way they engineer them, so, yeah. All right, so we won't take any action on that one at this time and see if there's any more complaints. We're down to ARPA timeline and project list. I sent mine out to Val late today. I don't know if you got it or not. So we've got to decide where the priorities are, and then there's a lot of things on that list that there's no, that the funding for it is unknown, or the cost is unknown, which at point we can designate, if we come to agreement, what we feel we should prioritize our funding for, and then the staff involved can reach out and start getting information on what this is going to cost. So you didn't get my email. It was done this afternoon. So I'm going to, you'll have the email when you get it home. You look at my list, then you've got this one, plus everything else has been added. You come up with your list, and we'll see what we agree on, and then we can at least say we're going to move forward on whatever. So what I came up with for the ARPA funding, and again, we spent probably around $3,000. Our total, not including what little interest we've got, we're going to receive from the ARPA is $302,214 and change. So my, just my list was the continued digitization of our land records, and Nancy has given us an approximate cost of $50,000. The vault upgrades are approximately $15,000. She had, Nancy had one for about humidity control in the vault, and that was unknown, so I will speak to her about that, but that did not make my list at this time. Cyber security upgrades was on our list as a priority, so I put that one down. The cost of that is unknown, but if we decide on that one, then you'll have to research to see what that would cost. The office generator, which is going to be a matching grant, that's being investigated for research rather to see what that's going to cost, so that's unknown. That is definitely something we can't leave out because they're going to pay for half of that. The play structure at the recreation area on South Mendon Road, the existing one is in dire need of replacement. That one, we need to look at. All of these, reserve funds and the possibility of grant money to go into this. A new structure, we're looking somewhere between $25,000 and $50,000, so we'll see where that comes in. And then the garage water system repairs that came in from our road commissioner, so they can turn that into potable water, was $1,400. And then one that has really recently caught my attention is the addition to the salt shed. There was a cost out there originally for doubling it. Bill in conversation today said a quarter... for doubling it. Bill in conversation today said a quarter addition might work, and so he'll have to research on what that is. The issue there is the salt shed has a capacity, height, width, and length, but you can't put the material in there because it pushes against the walls. So if you could put an addition onto that, that would solve that. So there's so many unknown-
Yes. I just wanted to interrupt you there with the salt shed. There is a transportation alternative to grant that potentially pays for the construction of salt sheds. So I am meeting with the regional planning commission for them to assist us in working through that, and I'll have Bill get some cost estimates together from the manufacturer of the building that we purchased it from.
Right. So anyways, the key thing is Val will take a look at my list and come up with her own list. We'll see what we agree on. At this point, we have until December 31st, 2026, for the funds to be expended, and we have until December 31st, 2024, for allocation of those funds. So we have time to let everyone do the research, to see where we come in for money on these projects, or whatever Val and I agree on. And then, once we get those numbers, then we'll go from there to see what we have left over for funding. As I mentioned before, the request we have for funding, which I've read before in the past, far exceeds the $302,214 that we have. So there are several other requests. We'll see where we come in as far as our list. Go ahead.
I think the only difference really, I have given my attention to the garage generator.
Okay.
His trucks need to be plugged in when it's cool. Is that right? Are they all diesel trucks? They need to be plugged in?
Well, this is a backup generator, like this one here.
Oh, okay.
They have a welder now they use.
That's stored in time.
Oh, okay. So that's only if they're outside.
Well, you wanted the garage generator on the-
Well, I didn't-
...
Or to just talk about it, yeah.
Yep. And that's number 17.
Or just to learn more about it.
Yeah.
We also received communication from the Chittin Select Board today. Andrew Quinn had sent me an email asking what, if there's any feedback from the Mendon Select Board regarding the Marso playground expansion request, and that they would like to communicate with Mendon on what each town is thinking in terms of those requests.
And did we ever find out what the amount of money that they received, it was different from ours in Chittin?
So Marso, oh, yes, they did receive $302,000 versus our $302,000. But the $50,000 request from Marso went to both communities, and Chittin just wants to know what Mendon's thinking. They potentially support the project of whether they support it at $50,000 as something that they're evaluating for.
Yeah. Going back, I think we're at a halt here. You know, we have a quest from East Ridge Circle for two generators. We got a cost on that. Val got an update. We may be able to do a portion of that. But I think we're on hold until the two of us can agree on, you know, a list, and then reach out to anyone that has to get the information. Once we get those figures locked in with our list, then we can look at what money is left over and what projects are left over. And so, you know, just off the top of my head, we have the request from Chittin, East Ridge Circles, Mendon on the move. Can I think of anything else on our list?
No. I just, I mean, with our rec center needing a playground immediately-
Yeah.
...structure, you know, takes precedent.
Yeah. And part of the Barstow one was included a pickleball court. We have a pickleball court here in Mendon already. We'll see. But we need, we've got so many unknowns here that we need numbers here to know how we can go forward. So at this point, I sent you that info. Take a look, look at your list, and then probably at the first meeting in November, we'll compare notes and see where we are.
Right. And we'll also be discussing the reserve fund that we need for budget purposes, and that may shift the line on where we can potentially save for part of the project already out of reserve funds and maybe supplement the funding with our funds. And then also reach out to see if there's any grant opportunity to also help support this project.
Thank you.
Under announcements, Sarah, I forgot to mention, but I'll mention it now, the Mendon Route 4 corridor scoping study project kickoff meeting is at 9:00 a.m., November 10th, 2022, here in the town office. At that time, we'll review the project scope and options for procuring and design consultant. With our, we'll have a design consultant period. At that meeting, our V-Trans project supervisor, Ashley Andrews, will provide an overview of the municipal assistance section project development process. If you didn't get it all, I'll send that to you in an email.
Thank you.
Also, under announcements, my apologies, I didn't get this at the beginning, the select board sent a letter of support regarding the AARP Vermont Livable Community Program dash winter placemaking and the Mendon Recreation Area. We're down to the fund one. It's the 2023-2024 Budget Department Head input. A lot of information So in this process, Val, we have three major sections of the budget. The administrative, highway, and public safety, along with looking at all the reserve funds for these. Process-wise, in the past, we've always looked at, went through the budget process, and then finally doing the math to see where we are percentage-wise over our current budget. Looking at inflation and everything, this is going to be a tough one, and when the percentage comes out, that's when you and I get our right hands out and have to send it back to department heads. So we'll see where we end up. It's hard to tell now. Sarah, do you want to start and take the lead on this, or I can do it?
I'll just do, I'll just do the summary line by line. First budget, you know, request you received from the town treasurer, Amy Gondell. She looks at the administrative budget that she usually spends money out of, and she also makes recommendations on other areas of the budget that other departments have, are in control of or oversight with. So just going down her recommendations, she has potential changes in the interest for late payment of taxes. This is a 1% interest. She's recommending that this income be increased from $10,000 to $11,000 based on the last three budget cycles, actuals. And then, I'm just going to go down through this. If you have any questions, just interrupt me.
Yeah, we're following you.
Delinquent tax, delinquent taxes is 8%. If you recall, 4% is paid to your delinquent tax collector, and 4% comes into the general fund. The current budget amount is $10,000. She proposes to increase this to $15,000 based on the last three budget cycles.
Okay, so these-
Traditionally, they've been coming in over the $10,000 amount.
Right.
Liquor license fees, she recommends a slight decrease to $230, just we do not issue as many liquor licenses in town. So her proposed income would increase by approximately $6,000.
All right. So we have two increases to the revenue in there and one decrease. So we have the $1,000 interest late tax, the late taxes percentage, and then we have the $5,000 delinquent tax, and then, of course, we have the deduction for liquor licenses of $230. Okay? We're with you there.
And then for expenses, she proposes a rate increase for the bookkeeper and assistant clerk. Legal expenses, she recommends a $2,000 increase there. Office supplies and maintenance, she's recommending a $1,000 increase, and this is-
We've got 500 here.
No, I'm sorry. Office supplies and maintenance from $4,000 to $5,000?
Uh, like, ours is 4,500 to 5,000.
Okay. So she just, she just added a typo in her current amount. So when you're looking at the budget-
Yeah.
-it looks like the budget for '22, '23 was 4,500. She added it to 4,000, but it is 4,500. I'll double-check that with the town report, but that's probably just a typo on her recommendation. She's recommending a $1,000 increase because we need to start utilizing past control at the town office. Postage and printing, she's just reporting that stamps are higher and we do more mailing. Streetlights, she's recommending a slight decrease from $5,500 to $5,000 in that same type of past expenditures. CAI is a tax map. We changed the amount that we have, are required to pay now. So she's recommending an decrease from $3,100 to $2,400. Town office utilities, cost for propane is increasing, and so electricity, so that recommendation is from $6,000 to $7,000. The miscellaneous category, we traditionally have spent the appreciation dinner for all of your volunteers out of that. After COVID, we started issuing gift certificates to thank them for their service. So she's just, you know, we're just looking for some direction from this one board on whether we want to continue that gift certificate program or go back to a banquet. We traditionally have used a facility in Mendon, and a lot of our restaurants are no longer open. The gift certificate program spreads it out among many of the local Mendon establishments.
Yeah. At this time, you know, Val will speak up, but I think we should stick with the gift certificates. We can just go ahead with that without a, without a motion.
Yeah. So if we budget that going forward, we'll look at how much we spend this season on that, and we could see a slight reduction in that budgeted amount for the '23, '24 budget cycle. So that concludes her administration budget. Other areas that she had made recommendations on, one is public safety, and I think we'll get to that when we get to the public safety budget, and I'll bring Nancy to comment this at that time, as well as infrastructure, because I want you to get the recommendations from those department heads first, and then we'll discuss her recommendations. Appropriations is something that you should discuss and decide on because the appropriation request, they would be gathering signatures now to get on the ballot for town meeting 2023, and the upcoming election is a good opportunity for them to gain signatures. Historically, in order to get on the ballot, it's the nonprofit organizations needed to submit a request signed by 5% of the voters, which is approximately 46 signatures. And requiring the petition does keep in check the number of organizations that request money from you, require the petition. The past few years, we waived that requirement to any previously funded organizations based on exposure to COVID in order to get the signatures.
So backing up on timeline for that decision that the select board would make regarding if you've been on the appropriations for three years and you're not increasing your request, we, at that point, could waive the signatures. Is that something we're talking about doing, could do now, or?
You could do it now. So that way, we could just announce on the website that if it is a new organization, they would need the 46 signatures, or just 5% of the voters, and it gives them an opportunity to get out and try to get signatures during the election at the first week of November. So it's beneficial right now to make that decision for the town meeting 2023.
Yeah. That 46 signatures is a tall order for the organizations that historically, year after year, we approve. I think even last year at town meeting, there was a motion just to approve them all under one motion, and they usually pass. So, you know, I don't have a problem of, you know, making that our policy, that if you've been funded and approved by the voters for three years and you're not increasing your request, that you do not need those 5% of the voters' petition.
Is that a motion, Sarah?
Well, we'll discuss it here. I'll make the motion, and then Val and I can discuss it. I'm not sure where she is on this, but, you know, I've just heard stories. It's hard to get out there and get all those signatures for, I mean, you might be requesting $500 or $25, it's the same 5%, or 46 signatures. That's a lot of work, so. Of course, we didn't do it during COVID because, you know, nobody wants to go door-to-door, have someone come to their door, so. And then the way, historically, how they're passed at town meeting, you know, there's very little objection to that. It's our charitable part, but not part of the select board budget, but it's not a select board meeting, it's a town meeting. So what do you think? Where are you on this, or?
I agree.
Okay. Val and I are in agreement on that. So I'll make a motion to waive the required signatures on a petition, provided the organization is not requesting an increase, and they have been approved for at least three years in a row. Approved at town meeting for three years in a row.
I'm second to that.
Is that motion okay? Val seconded it. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That's done. Back to the budget.
So moving on to the recommendations from law enforcement and industry- So moving on to the recommendations from law enforcement and infrastructure, I summarized it on a table for you. I'm going to start with a formal recommendation for health insurance. As I described earlier, this petition that you made for support for fiscal year 20, or for county year 2023 had a budget of $104,337. The amount put in the '23, '24 budget would be $109,013. Winter fuel, Bill has made a recommendation, and for a fuel price increase for both winter and summer roads, that's based on the current price of diesel fuel, and it doesn't, it doesn't account for any additional increase as far as usage goes. That's just a price increase. Salt is the same thing. Last year's salt price was $80.31. We just received the quote for this year at $97 per ton, which will be filling up the shed in the spring. So that price increase is from a recommended budget increase from $45,600 to $48,500. And that's to purchase treated salt. So in the past, we purchased untreated salt, and we treated it ourselves with liquid chloride. So along with that price increase for salt, he's recommending a decrease in the liquid chloride budget from $7,500 to $5,000. And that is to account for that he would need to treat that salt because we're purchasing untreated. The $5,000 on liquid chloride, still, we use liquid chloride for road stabilization as well as dust control. So he still utilizes liquid chloride, but he just wouldn't need to hit on this salt. Gravel, there was a slight price increase in gravel from $13 a ton to $13.50, so he's recommending a $600 increase there.
It's not bad, okay.
And so that concludes the budget request for highways. So essentially, it's not to purchase any additional materials or commodities. Those are just inflationary increases at the current amounts. Recreation is requesting a slight increase in order to fertilize the ball field this year, but they anticipate not having to spend money on the quarter body because the Rutland County Little League that is utilizing the field during the summer months is paying for the quarter body.
Yeah, the fertilizing, you know, I look into that. I questioned that last year at our meeting.
Correct. We need to make sure that we're allowed to do that as a-
Well, yeah, yeah, the type of fertilizer and then plan on mowing more.
Right.
I just wanted to back up. So on our last budget for fuel, for both gasoline and diesel, we budgeted an extra $10,000 because we knew what was going to happen to that. Are we on budget for that? Did that cover it, or was that not enough, or you don't know?
I don't recall what we're talking about.
So the budget cycle last year, we knew fuel was going up, diesel and gas, and so we added an extra $10,000 for the fuel budget. I'm just wondering where we are on that. Was that enough money, or was that underbudgeted?
It was, I believe it was underbudgeted, not because we didn't carry the price increase, but yet we weren't running an additional truck because of the lack of the employee, the vacancy in that employee position. We didn't use as much fuel as if we had three trucks on the road.
Okay.
So last year's actual for, for winter fuel was, you know, $3,000 higher than budgeted, and for summer fuel, it was for almost $500 over what we had budgeted. I'd have to ask Nancy what the yearly gain numbers are.
Okay.
But we are seeing that we haven't been spending, we haven't been utilizing or consuming as much gas because of the lack of employees.
Okay, we're down to law enforcement staff.
So law enforcement, first I'll talk about the income side of things. Both Nancy and Lili are recommending a decrease in the revenue that we receive for law enforcement. The state has restructured the fine programs, and they are taking a greater percentage of fines than they have in the past. And as Lili and I anticipate expenditures out of the law enforcement fund, I'm also requesting that we go back to putting a percentage of the fines received into the reserve fund for equipment replacement going forward. We're spending additional money on upgrading the dry hydrants, and so we receive grant funds in order to do those upgrades, but there's also an out-of-pocket cost for us, and those are being spent out of the public safety fund. So current budget is $35,000. The proposed budget would be $27,000 with taking 20% of the fines and putting them into the reserve fund. This is an outline that we did previously to, I believe it was 2017, that we switched and eliminated that income going into the reserve fund. So essentially, Lili assumes we're going to receive about $30,000 in income, but it would be $3,000 transferred into the reserve fund if we met that income level.
The state of Vermont taking more out of the revenue or from the fines? That includes every, any ticket issued here in Mendon, either Route 4 or in Village District?
That's correct, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. So additional expenses out of law enforcement, or out of public safety is for law enforcement staff. We received a budget increase from the Rutland County share from $46.54 an hour to $48.40 an hour. I believe that was a 3% increase, but, don't open that. We have to look that up. Public safety, equipment replacement. So because we're doing equipment replacement out of the public safety fund, Lili is requesting that we take $500 out of this line item of the budget and put it into the reserve fund budget. So you'll see the next line item is increasing the reserve fund budget from 500 to 1,000.
Mm-hmm.
So that's just moving the $500-
Moving up, okay.
Into the reserve fund instead of in the, or into the general fund budget. So that impact of those potential changes is $21,711. A decrease of revenue by $8,000 and an increase in expenses-
Of 13,711.
Of $13,711.
All right, net impact, $27,711.
And as far as zoning, Susanna did have a budget increase, or, you know, a budget request, but she did ask for permission to update information on the website because she would like to post forms and update the electronic submission of forms. I had, right now, Jesse Bridge is our information manager, and so certainly zoning information can be updated on the website. Right now, it would, it would just go through Jesse, and I haven't had a conversation with Jesse about this yet, but right now, she designs the pages so that everything looks cohesively. So I, I mean, I don't think the select board would have a problem with granting Susanna permission to provide information to Jesse to post and update that information for zoning.
Right, I don't even think that would cross our path. I think that's strictly her decision as zoning administrator.
Well, we manage the information that's posted on the site.
All right, she's looking for our blessing on this one, I'm guessing? Susanna, as far as posting on the website?
Yeah. Correct. Yeah, updating the zoning information on the website.
Hang on. All right, I'll make a motion to grant permission to our zoning administrator to update zoning information on the Mendon website.
I'll second that.
To Jesse. So she would give the information to Jesse, and Jesse would post it.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. You have to go on that. So that's a lot of information to digest here for this meeting, and we continue with it on the next meeting. And at some point, do the math and see where we are, where we are percentage-wise. Any other information on the budget?
So just besides, you know, we're still continuing to work on the reserve fund. So getting, just verifying equipment costs and making sure that we have budgeted amounts there. We know that savings have increased, so making sure that we have updated the information allocated into the highway improvement fund. Public safety, we're working through, making sure that we have enough money in that fund. So by the next meeting, you'll have any budget, any budget request of increasing or decreasing appropriated amount into the reserve fund based on updating the reserve fund information.
Okay. All right, where are you? Any questions at this point, or you're following along pretty well?
Following along.
Okay. All right, so we got all this to, to take home, look at these increases, decreases, increases in revenue, increases in expenses, decreases in revenue, and any decreases in expenses. A lot of these look like they're based on inflation, unfortunately, but in several of these things, we don't have any control over. Sand, salt, the amount we need, and the cost, and that, looking at the, at the fuel, what that's going to be like for, as I explained at town meeting, when we go through this in October, right now, this budget doesn't kick in until July 1st of 2023, and then goes 12 months beyond that. So it's, it's really reaching out there and looking at budget history and coming to a decision as to what is going to fund the town for the next fiscal year, starting again July 1st, 2023. All right, so I think budget-wise, we're up to date. We'll just continue, and whatever information you have, to continue for the next meeting. I know we have salaries coming up.
Yeah, the next meeting will discuss salaries and reserve funds.
Salaries and reserve funds?
Correct.
Okay. Added to the, we're done with the budget for now. I'll continue right through our last meeting in December. Historically, the only unknown is the Rutland County tax. Don't we always wait sometime in January before they throw that at us?
Yeah, that's, you know, usually right at the end of the, or the calendar year, so that- So on the test that I'm tracking down, we have received a liability request for any changes from BLCT or Regional Planning Commission for June, so there might be some minor changes.
All right, I'm out on a limb here, but I do not believe regional planning will change. I think they voted to keep it the same, which is, I believe, a thousand dollars. All right, added to the agenda, which is going to be F. When we purchased the F-150, the tires that came on it were, I believe, all seasonal or something like that, and they wanted a more aggressive tire, so they purchased four tires, which are on it now. And so now there's four tires there that came with the truck. Both Newt and Bill have approached me about the Wheels For Warm coming up, and if we were interested in donating these tires to Wheels For Warm, I informed them that that's a select board decision. And so I said I would bring it up at this meeting because it is time-sensitive, because the drop-off for the beginning of Wheels For Warm, I believe, is next week. And the drop-off is at Casilla Construction here in Mendon, one of the drop-offs. So do we want to donate these or sell them?
Well, I trust that Bill and Newt would know whether or not the tires should be sold or donated, whether it would benefit from selling them. So I wouldn't mind donating.
All right, you'd like to make a motion, then?
Make a motion that we donate the four tires to-
Wheels For Warm.
Wheels For Warm.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor, say aye? Aye. The motion passes. Oh, contact Bill. And that kind of fits in with our charitable section of the town meeting for appropriations. I don't think we missed anything. Brian came in late. You have anything for us?
I didn't see what was on the agenda, so I tried to get online.
Oh.
But I'm just trying right now, too. It's not on there. But I'm just trying right now, too, it's not on there. No agenda, no way to get on, no way to join the meeting.
So I wanted to clarify that the Mendon website has, has changed and was announced earlier.
We announced it.
Looking at it right now, it's not on there.
Is that, is that mendonbt.gov?
Try that one.
Mendon website.
Looking at it right now, it's not on there. I just tried to look for it, the last five minutes. Did you go to www.o2dcom? No, because it should be on the, it should be on our site. Click on and join the meeting. Shouldn't have to go look around for it. Should be right on the site. Should have the agenda for tonight, too, on it, but it wasn't.
I'm just verifying right now.
Yeah, Sarah checked that, we can't really give you, I don't have that.
No, they don't send you that page at all. You have to come here again. Don't make any sense.
All right, we'll look into that, make sure, Sarah's checking that now to be able to get on to the.
She got it.
To the meeting.
The agenda is under mendonbt.gov. You go to boards and committees, you go to select board, you go to their agendas.
It's on there.
That's 24 for agendas on.
On the website, just got to go to select board.
The agenda includes the link to participate in the meeting.
All right, got that cleared up. Uh, I'll make.
Maybe you should take the old site down.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Aye, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.